Good morning and welcome to City Hall. Nick Schaefer is the pastor at Oklahoma City First Friends Church. He's going to lead us in the invocation as we get started this morning. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman McAtee if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But would everyone please stand?
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings you have given Oklahoma City and her people and the prosperity we now enjoy. You've been near us through some hard times, including economic crisis, domestic terrorism, and natural disasters, and they have all brought us together and made us stronger. We lift up to you those who are struggling today, some who are homeless, some who are hungry, some who are unemployed, some who have been victims of violence, some who have lost their way. We pray for our mayor, the council, city officers, and those who will participate in this meeting today. Bless their lives and their families. May they feel your presence guiding them today as they meet. May their decisions be the right ones to bring peace, safety, and prosperity to this city and her people. Bless our state and federal leaders and government. Bless all those who are employed by the city. Bless all our public servants. Bless your church in this city as they proclaim the only way to have a relationship with you. We pray this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Haste to fight, salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A very important day in American history happened on July 26th of 1990 when the United States passed the, let me get this right, the Americans with Disabilities Act. And we are coming up this weekend on the 25th anniversary of that occasion, and we thought it'd be a great time to have the Mayor's Committee on Disability Concerns come down so we could have a proclamation to establish Oklahoma City's commitment to disability concerns. So I'll ask our committee members who are here to come forward and stand behind me as the clerk reads our proclamation.
Whereas 2015 marks the 25th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, which was passed on July 26th, 1990, to ensure the civil rights of citizens with disabilities. Whereas the city of Oklahoma City affirms the principles of equality and inclusion for persons with disabilities as embodied in the ADA, the laws of the United States of America, laws of the state of Oklahoma, and ordinances of the city of Oklahoma City. Whereas throughout the United States, people with disabilities possess the knowledge and skills to help energize the economy, and each community must make opportunities available for citizens with disabilities to bring their special knowledge and skills to the workforce. Whereas numerous order organizations in the city of Oklahoma City, including the Mayor's Committee on Disability Concerns, work with constituents and communities to bring forth the promise of hope and freedom that is envisioned by the passage of the ADA. Now therefore Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim July 26, 2015, as Americans with Disabilities Act Awareness Day in Oklahoma City, and he urges all citizens to recognize that people with disabilities can learn, work, pay taxes, buy goods and services, and be self-supporting if given the opportunity.
Let's show our appreciation in acknowledging the 25th anniversary of the ADA. Sidney chairs our local committee. Sidney?
Thank you. On behalf of your Committee on Disability Concerns, I would like to accept the proclamation. You have assembled a wonderful, wonderful group of people that collect at the table every month, the expertise that comes, the knowledge that's shared is amazing, and we want to thank you also for promoting the change that happens in our great city. So thank you very much.
We are doing what we can to change the built environment and to make ADA better every day that we can in Oklahoma City. Thank you all for this opportunity. And do you have an event coming up this weekend that people might want to participate in?
There is. Somebody could probably speak more to this than I can.
It's called Walk and Roll, and you're invited to walk from 11th or 10th and Hudson to the State Capitol on Sunday morning starting at 9:00. If you're interested, you may park your cars in the South Lot of the Capitol, and shuttles will take you to the beginning point. And they will have water at halfway, but we also suggest that you might want to bring your own. But it's about a mile, 1.7 miles. So we hope to see you Sunday morning. Thank you.
All right, so Sunday morning, 9:00, and show up early, go over to the Capitol. They'll have a shuttle bus that'll take you to the beginning of the ride, to the walk, and then you can walk, walk over there in celebration of the 25th anniversary of ADA. Let's show our appreciation one more time. Thank you. We're on item three of the council agenda, and item three is to appointment of Dr. Raul Font to the Library Commission. Is there a motion? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item four is the Journal of Council Proceedings. For A is to approve the journal, sorry, for A is to receive the journal for July 7th, and for B is to approve the journal for June 23rd. All right, comments or questions on the journal? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item five is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, if you this morning, sorry, on page 17, 17 page, on page 17, item nine I1. Item C 626 West Reno, who has said that be stricken? The owner has removed. Moving to page 18, under nine J1, A 9608 Blue Bonnet Place, who has said that be stricken? The owner has secured. Item H 1816 Terrace Lawn, who has said that be stricken? The owner has secured. Item J 9,000 North Walker, who has said that be stricken? The owner has secured. Item M 17 Southwest 14th Street, who has said that be stricken? The owner has removed. Item T 409 Northwest 33rd Street, who has said that be stricken? The owner has secured. Item W 2728 Southwest 42nd Street, who has said that be stricken? We need to re-notify. Item Y 324 Southeast 52nd Street, who has said that be stricken? We need to rework. There's a new owner. Moving to page 19, under item nine K1, A 9608 Blue Bonnet Place, who has said that be stricken? The owner has secured. Item J 1816 Terrace Lawn Drive, who has said that be stricken? The owner has secured. Item K 9,005 North Walker, who has said that be stricken? The owner secured. Item N 17 Southwest 14th Street, who has said that be stricken? The owner has removed. Item U 409 Northwest 33rd Street, who has said that be stricken? The owner has secured. Item X 2728 Southwest 42nd Street, who has said that be stricken? We need to re-notify. And finally, item Z 324 Southeast 52nd Street, who has said that be stricken? We need to rework. There's a new owner.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, item six is revocable permits. Item 6A is a right-of-way use permit to hold the Downtown Dash. Is anyone here from downtown OKC? All right, well, I'll note that that event will take place August 1st, North Walker Avenue and Northwest 9th Street. It'll go through the neighborhoods of Midtown, Harity Hills, and Messa Park. How about a motion? Meg, would you like to make that motion? All right, cast your votes on item 6A. It passes unanimously. And item 6B is a request for a revocable right-of-way permit, and this is for eighth and each, and they're going to be holding these on the final Fridays of each month. And it looks like Rick Vick? Yeah, come on forward. Yeah, and Rick, we will need your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. For the record, my name is Rick Vick, R-I-C-K-V-I-C-K. My address is 2833 Marigold Lane, Edmond, Oklahoma. Good morning, distinguished members of City Council and fellow citizens. My name is Rick Vick, and I am an honorably discharged Navy veteran. I am the owner of a service-disabled veteran-owned business, The Galley Sold Food &amp; More Mobile Food Truck. I feel it necessary and appropriate to discuss what I believe are significant concerns regarding the lack of consistency in regards to the selection process of food trucks for the monthly H&amp;H Association night market. I would also like to recommend some suggestions that I believe that could help improve the transparency of the process in an effort to make the event more inclusive for all food trucks involved. As it presently stands, H&amp;H Association states that they have a random lottery, excuse me, random lottery process to determine which trucks will be able to serve at the event. The lack of transparency comes from the fact that this lottery is only monitored by a select group of individuals, and the only way to find out if you made it or not is to receive an email indicating you were selected. In addition to this, 66.6% of the trucks, that's 20 out of the 30 trucks that are allowed to participate in H&amp;H, have been given legacy status. What that does is that mathematically gives 10 slots for all the other food trucks in the state of Oklahoma to participate, effectively locking the majority of food truck operators out of the event. As an Oklahoma food truck, we are all required to go through the same vetting licenses procedure to ensure we operate legitimately. I believe the process for selection should be just as standardized, equitable, and transparent. It would be my formal suggestion to have the lottery done at the monthly Oklahoma Independent Food Truck Association meeting where all potential applicants could be present to physically see their names placed in the hopper. And subsequently, present to seem, to see who were selected. This would remove any doubt about the fairness of the process. I also suggest that the lottery selection process be held the month prior to the H&amp;H event to give chosen trucks adequate time to prepare or to bow out gracefully. This would facilitate necessary time for replacement trucks. Presently, you get about a 17-day notice to prepare. Now, I would like to direct your attention to the exhibits that are included in their package. Their actual map, their overlay map. In their overlay map, you can see designated pods that they have constructed to designate food trucks to line up and park. Well, unfortunately, the same trucks are giving on a consistent basis the high-traffic areas of H&amp;H, which is Hudson, straight up and down. H&amp;H Association has expanded and has placed additional trucks on the side streets. After the lottery, we recommend that another lottery be held right after it to where individuals that are selected based on draw could pick their options of where they want to place their truck. Lastly, in order to facilitate a diverse community of Oklahoma business opportunity to serve the community, I would suggest that upon being selected for H&amp;H event, the approximately 30 trucks selected would be ineligible for the following month. This would allow for a fair and equitable opportunity for many Oklahoma small businesses to generate revenue at one of the most premier food truck events in the state. Please set aside any additional right-of-way permits until we can get the H&amp;H Association to the table. I would like to close by adding a personal reflection. 20 years ago, I stood downtown Oklahoma City not as a business owner, but as a member of the world's finest Navy. As a duty to my country, I had no second thoughts or reservations about risking my life as a first responder for the Oklahoma City bombing. I've dedicated my life and service to helping community and mankind. I am now asking the community to ensure a fair process for all attempting to operate as fully licensed and legitimate food truck operators. I appreciate the opportunity to present this to you. Godspeed. Thank you.
Could Josh come in for a minute?
Josh doesn't do, uh...
Oh, he doesn't?
Drew's here, though.
Drew's here, okay, yeah. Drew, come forward. Could you see that we get a response from H&amp;H? We don't pick the food truck vendors. We have no part of that process.
Yes, they handle all the food truck vending...
But I would love to get H&amp;H, their board, to officially kind of give us a response to his suggestions, how they might run a more equitable process in their trucks.
And maybe there's a possibility that we could get Mr. Vick, maybe a meeting together with the organizers of H&amp;H to maybe come up with, because I thought he had some good suggestions, so he'd certainly be able to help bridge that gap between the two.
Maybe we can help out. All right, thanks. All right, we need a motion on items 6A and B.
I would move approval on 6B.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll assess the council meeting convenes the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are four items. Is there a motion on the MFA? All right, cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA convenes the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, again, four items. Second, cast your votes. And the PPA passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA convenes the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Just the claims and payroll today. All right, cast your votes, and the EAT passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC EAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right. We have a motion in a second. Are there any individual considerations?
Mayor, today I wondered if I could ask if you could pull item AS1 and vote on that separately.
Okay.
And then I'd like to briefly mention item 7L and 7BC.
I'd like to pull BB and vote on that separately.
BD?
B as in boy, B as in boy.
Okay.
And then also a comment on O.
Comment on?
Oh, no, sorry, sorry, sorry. I have it backwards. Vote separately on O, and then a comment on B as in boy, B as in boy.
All right, anybody else?
And also, Mr. Mayor, AE.
All right, Meg, you want to get us started by commenting on 7L and 7BC?
Yes, certainly, Mayor. Thank you very much. I just wanted to mention 7L, and it's a series of items, 1 through 7, which are the city's professional service agreements with a series of our neighborhoods. And I just wanted to, you know, make sure that people recognize how much effort the city staff puts into helping build capacity for our neighborhood commercial districts that are revitalizing, but how they also spread all the way across the city. This involves the 39th Street District, which is 39th between North Penn and Young's Boulevard, Friends of Northwest 10th, which extends on Northwest 10th between Hefner Parkway and Council Road, Capitol Hill District, the Paseo Arts District, the Plaza District, Uptown 23rd, and Windsor Business Group, which is I-44 west to Pennell all along 23rd Street. So we're reaching communities and neighborhoods north, south, east, and west in the city, and the staff is doing a fantastic job. Item BC, I just wanted to recognize the Kirkpatrick Family Fund, which is an affiliated fund of the Oklahoma City Community Foundation, and they, since 1975, has been helping to provide funding for police department management staff to attend specified training. And over the course of those years, they've provided almost $250,000 in donations to the city to send our officers to management or leadership training. And I think it's a tremendous partnership and really am grateful for their support.
Yeah, great project. All right, Ed, you wanted to comment on BB?
So BB will start the process of our police officers having and providing naloxone. I read about this in the paper over the weekend. Is there any, anyone to answer questions about that, or?
I think Chief City can be here in a minute.
So, I guess, so one, obviously, we have an epidemic in Oklahoma City, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of deaths. We don't have adequate treatment facilities. We have an opiate epidemic. We lead, we've led for many years among the, in the country in terms of opiate addiction and opiate deaths. Opiates, loratab, percocet, fentanyl, morphine, heroin, they all cause respiratory depression, so they make the patient stop breathing. But one question I have, Chief, is do we have an ability to monitor oxygen levels? Or what, besides the naloxone kit, will our officers have?
The capability do they have?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, they're trained in CPR, but they don't have the equipment to monitor those oxygen levels. At that time, if they're in distress like that, there would be, the fire department would be called, and also IMSA. So IMSA has the ability of also actually providing the naloxone also. But the officers, you know, what we know of the, of the drug is that it's fairly safe. It's taken through the nasal cavities. It's easy to administer, and there's, there's really no chance of overdose, something like that. So it's pretty, it's a pretty safe, pretty safe drug to use. Now, I have somebody here from the Department of Mental Health also, if you have, have other particulars about that drug, maybe she can answer some questions also. But that's what I know, I know of the drug. It's been used and being used consistently throughout the country right now by other, by other agencies, and they believe successfully.
I think the thing, and I'm very enthusiastically in support, and I'm glad to vote for this and glad that we're doing it. The, the thing is, I think that it, you know, most of the time, if you have enough overdose to cause respiratory depression, either the patient is going to be deceased, or they're going to be, they can still have respiratory depression, but not, still have high enough oxygen that they really didn't need to be revived. Then there's a sweet spot where you have respiratory depression and their oxygen level is down, and you want to administer to those. But to a certain percentage, they probably wouldn't have needed it. You'll throw them into withdrawal. You'll induce nausea and vomiting. It'd be very, very, very painful for the patient. So that's, I mean, just something to watch. I think that, and we hear anecdotally of how many lives are saved, but I wonder if some of those, the patient was lethargic, they had respiratory depression, but without being able to monitor their oxygen, it probably didn't save their life. We just woke them up and were claiming it as a save life. So it's just something, I think, to watch.
And that's what I've said about the programs, really, across the country. You know, we really don't know how many lives were saved. I mean, many times it could be administered, and either they weren't in, in critical distress or, you know, medically, obviously, you have the expertise and, and we don't know for sure. But I think there's probably things that have been claimed that aren't, aren't necessarily a saved life. But the side of that, that we, you know, the other side of that is that there really doesn't seem to be much harm in providing that drug, at least from all the information that we've, we've read and received. There isn't any harm in actually administering that, that drug to, to somebody that may be in distress from an overdose. So, and, and again, we don't do that without calling, immediately calling IMSA or calling the fire department. So you have some EMTs that, that maybe can address those things that you're talking about very quickly. But there, this is not an attempt to make officers medical experts and provide medical care. But it, it does seem to provide some type of, you know, some type of manner in trying to save a life, if possible, from an overdose, that they may be the first responder to get there.
Right. Thank you.
Okay.
And John, you wanted to comment on item AE?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. AE is an inter-local agreement with the Board of County Commissioners of Oklahoma County to provide street improvements to certain streets that are common to Oklahoma City and Oklahoma County. And I think this is definitely a great tool to use to repair streets in our, within our city limits. And so I just want to thank County Commissioner Willa Johnson Rayvon, County Commissioner Rayvon, County Commissioner Brian Mon. I know for Ward 7, this has definitely been a blessing to some of my rural parts of my ward. So again, thank you.
Just, just a word about O. Are you finished, John?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I wanted to talk just for a second about O, just because as a body, we're tasked with policy, creating policy, and I just want to talk about what, what our goals are with these, with Section 108 loans. Here, we're going to use about $7 million of a Section 108 loan to give a low-interest loan for the 21C Hotel. This project is about 53 million. We're giving more than 10% in TIF funds, grants and loans, which is relatively high percentage for a TIF allocation already. They'll get some 20, 20, 25% of their construction costs reimbursed for the federal historic tax credits, then they'll get state historic tax credit. So taxpayers are heavily involved in this without the Section 108 loans. Section 108 loans have really three requirements according to the HUD guidelines. One, all projects and activities must either principally benefit low and moderate income persons, which I think this project has a problem needing. Second, it has to aid in the elimination or prevention of slums and blight, you can make an argument, and it has to meet the urgent needs of the community. And it's not just that it has to meet those three criteria. All projects have to meet those three criteria. It would have to be balanced against the needs of the rest of the city, the other areas that are economically distressed. We only have some, maybe 20 million, and we've already used many, many millions. We've used this in the past where, on the Gold Dome, where they defaulted, and we were using our CDBG funds, which is really the city's only way of, these federal pass-through funds to address our poverty and disenfranchisement. But, so we lost that $1 million of CDBG funds because the loan defaulted. So I think that it required, it deserves scrutiny. Eligible activities all seem to be mostly public facilities for the benefit of, of the community. Rehabilitation of publicly-owned real property, construction, reconstruction of installation of public facilities, payment of interest on the guaranteed load and issuance, cost of public offerings, debt service reserves, public works, and then in limited circumstances, housing construction as part of a community economic development. So obviously, this doesn't meet any of those requirements of eligible activities. The only way that you get this in is if you use, where it says economic development activities eligible under CDBG, and there's about 25 of those. About 24, this doesn't qualify. The only one that it would possibly qualify, that it would qualify, is the one that outlines what happens when you give this assistant to a private... what happens when you give this assistant to a private, for-profit entity. And there you have to meet five criteria. Again, you have to meet an urgent need, and I'm not sure that the 21C Hotel is, is one of the city's highest urgent needs. It has to create or retain businesses owned by community residents, which I would argue it does not. It's not owned by community residents. It has to assist businesses that provide goods or services needed by and affordable to low and moderate income residents, which a high-end boutique hotel, I don't think, does. Prevents or eliminates slums and blight, you can, you can make an argument, and it creates or retains jobs for low and moderate income persons. And this apparently is what we're hanging all of our, of our claim on, is that we're going to create 130 service sector jobs. So that's the, that's the public benefit that we're using as a policy. This is the best use of this $7 million, is to effectively ask or act as a, to decrease the interest rate. You've got, it's basically a 2%, 2% loan. The developers indicated in our Neighborhood Association Meeting, or Conservation Committee, that they could get the financing, but that it would decrease the bottom line. And I'm wondering what, what fixed interest rate, because this isn't fixed. This is LIBOR goes up, which it's likely to do over the next years, because it can't go down. It's at its lowest, historically lowest rates. So it's likely to go up from 2%. So what are we adding to the bottom line? If it's 1% of, of $7 million, that's $70,000 a year, 2%, 140,000. That's the best use of this $7 million. I just, I'm not sure that it's eligible, and I'm not sure, and I'm quite confident it's not the best use of $7 million. We're talking about potentially tying up our CDBG allocations for the next 20 years as collateral. And I just don't recall any conversation over the last four and a half years about what do we want to use Section 108 loans for? What is the policy? These are minimum wage jobs likely, housekeeping jobs. They are, and that's, I just cannot believe that's the best that we can do in economically distressed areas with this $7 million. I think that we, by charter, we are a policymaking body. We're supposed to have discussions about policy. And to make policy, you have to have multiple choices. You have to have choice A, B, C, and then you, as a body, choose, and that's making policy. Policy isn't voting up or down on what staff comes together and presents you with. That's not, that's not meeting the, the obligations under the charter. Thanks.
All right. We have a motion and a second on the consent docket. I'm going to take that motion to exclude the two items council has asked to pull, and that would be item O and item AS1. So we'll vote on the consent docket, except for those two items. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Now let's vote on item O. Is there a motion on item O?
No.
Okay. Cast your votes. Item O passes eight-one. And now I need a motion on item AS1.
Move to item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Cast your votes, and it passes eight-zero. All right. We're onto the concurrence docket. Is there a motion there? Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any comments from individual council members on the concurrence docket? All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. That moves us on to item nine. This starts a series of items that require a separate vote. The first would close a utility easement in Ward Eight. It's just south of 160th Street near MacArthur. Mark?
Yes, this is an ordinance on final hearing. It's the applicant Meadow 61. It went before the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission recommended approval. There's been no letters of protest, no protesters at the Planning Commission, and no calls or emails. David Box is here if anybody has questions, but at this time, I'd move for approval.
All right. Cast your votes on item nine A. It passes unanimously. Item nine B is an ordinance up for final hearing today, and this is our definition of our shuttle service out at the airport. Is there a motion on nine B? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item nine C is also up for final hearing today, and this would repeal the existing ordinances that were put in place last summer regarding Uber and Lyft, and this will get us into compliance with state law. Is there a motion on nine C?
I have, I have one question.
Uh huh.
We also, during that whole discussion, deregulated the taxis and limos to some extent. This does not affect that at all. Is that, is that correct, or does that repeal all those changes also?
I missed your question, sir.
Okay. Does this repeal all of the changes that we made to the taxi and limo stuff also?
No, it does not. This ordinance will only be repealing the TNC changes. So anything that affected TNCs or mentioned them was removed from the ordinance.
Okay. Sounds good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Pete?
I think one of the things we might look at is further deregulation of, of limos and taxis in light of.
I agree.
Of what, of what there is here. There's been interesting debate all this last week about Uber and Lyft on national television, number of national television articles about it, and many of them saying the very things that I said several months ago, that, that this is being sold as some kind of a innovative thing, and really what it, all it amounts to is just an effort to circumvent regulations. I mean, their, their competitive advantage is basically the fact that they aren't regulated when you look at it. And I think in order to be fair to the people that, that have abided by the law for all these years, we ought to take another look at whether we shouldn't further deregulate cabs if that's going to be the law.
But do we know if they are going to go to the state and seek similar legislation? I mean, that would be the easiest solution. If I was, if I was a taxi cab operator and I saw what had occurred over the last year, I think that I would go to the state legislature and say, well, okay, well, to be fair, you need to have our regulations be similar.
Well, I think so. But, you know, you're, you're more optimistic about the legislature wisdom than I am. I think it's up to, we, if we want to regulate, if we want to be responsible for what goes on in the city, I think it's incumbent on us to do it. I'm not, I don't mean that argumentatively. It is argumentative.
Well, let's wait to hear from the industry, because I, if, if they're going to go to the state level, then I don't think we need to do anything. But if, if they're not, and they would seek, you know, I, I agree with you. I mean, we, we have to level the playing field to the extent that we can. And there are unintended consequences on this issue, no matter what you do.
Exactly.
So I, I would just challenge the industry. If, if you want us to help instead of the state, that's fine. We can probably do that. But I think a better answer would be to go to the state and try to get the same legislation in place that Lyft and Uber did.
Or we could just go to the state and ask them to abolish local government. That would be another option.
Or that. Yeah. Or that. You're right. That would be another option.
Just for clarification on my part, are you suggesting, when you say deregulate the taxi industry, does that mean eliminate all rules related to taxis so that anybody could just buy a car, paint it whatever color they wanted to, and start charging for services?
Well, under the regulation for Uber and Lyft, anybody can do that now, but they don't even have to paint the car.
I understand, but I'm just asking, is that what your intent is to completely?
No, no, it isn't, because I think there are regulations, and we argued about that. And that's basically the reason we passed the legislation that we did, was because most of us believed there are, there is a minimum of regulation with regard to safety, for example, rates, for another example. We, but, we, all of us, I believed at the time we voted for that, believed there was some minimum regulation. So I don't think, no, that wiping them out is the answer.
I thought we reduced the regulations for the taxi industry, as James mentioned last summer, whenever it was that we voted on it. I, I'm not sure what we need to do further.
If I had to clarify, just, just a little bit of what we, maybe on a bigger picture. We regulated taxis in the past for both rates and, and their, their drivers and the condition of the cabs, and we had a number of, of rules in place for taxis. Lyft and Uber came in, the transportation network companies came in, and didn't want to have any regulations. We attempted, and I know Mr. White doesn't believe we were successful, but we tried to level the amount of regulations we had over age. So in other words, we took away the rate regulations on the taxis, because Lyft and Uber didn't have that, and we added the safety regulations for Lyft and Uber, which required that the cars and their, their driver, background checks on their drivers and their, and their cars be, be looked at. Then the state came through and said, no, you can't do that. On the network transportation companies, you can't have those type of regulations. We'll set the rules for that, because it's a statewide concern, because they cross city limits. So now we have the taxi companies that we do not have controls over the rates, but we do have controls over safety provisions regarding the drivers and the condition of the vehicles. She's, she's not in the, that's, so that's where we're at on it. We've taken away a lot of the rates, but we still do have this, the general safety provisions for the drivers and, and the cabs, other, some other licensing.
Well, there's some other things too, like, for instance.
Color of the cabs.
Right. I mean, we.
And they can only be at taxi stops.
Right. I mean, there are a number of things that put them at now, at a serious competitive disadvantage. I thought what we worked out before was a reasonable compromise. Everybody was a little irritated with it, I thought, but generally, that's how you judge whether it's a fair compromise. I thought, but when you take out one, one side's total compromises, you leave the other side still at a pretty serious competitive disadvantage, I think. I mean, maybe it's not anything we want to worry about, but it seems to me that, that in, in, in all fairness, we should encourage the cab companies to either come to us or, or get bushels full of money and go to the legislature and try to lobby them to change, because it ain't going to work otherwise. It's not fair. I mean, they, Uber and Lyft is not a new service. They're doing the same thing cabs have been doing for 100 years, taking money and hauling you from one place to another. It's just a different way of doing it, and it, and it basically makes its money based on its lack of regulation. And maybe we don't want regulation anymore. If that's fine, I'm, I'm one to nine, if that's what we decide. But I don't think it's fair to regulate one segment of an energy to, of a, of an industry to the extent we regulate cabs and leave another one to, to cherry pick the business without regulation. That's, that's my point.
Well, I, just, so one, one issue of litigation in other cities and states in terms of cherry picking is that Uber and Lyft don't have provisions for the disabled. With the state law, now where are we for the city's disabled? I mean, in terms of Uber and Lyft making.
As, as far as the city can't have any.
What would a state law say? I mean, what, where are we for Oklahoma City's disabled residents?
Hi, Dave.
Your question is, where are we at with how the cities can regulate TNCs? Is that accurate interpretation?
With the state regulations now governing Oklahoma City.
For the TNC.
Right.
Actions. The state has, the legislature sent all regulation to the Oklahoma Corporation Commission, and at the moment, they are actually going through and making their own rules that they were permitted to make by the legislature. At this time, I don't have those, so they are still in the works, what those rules will be. There is some oversight that is mentioned throughout the statute regarding what type of auditing power or what type of insurance requirements are required at the corporation level, and they, or Corporation Commission level, and they are being held to those at the moment, but further rules are being written as well.
So the state law didn't write specific rules, it just deferred to the Corporation Commission, and the Corporation Commission will then handle whether they're disabled or?
Yes. Certain rules were put in place that requirements on insurance need to be met, an audit process would be allowed if the Corporation Commission looked, needed to or had complaints from the citizens. But further rules were actually permitted to be written. They are not at the moment completed, but they are, the Corporation Commission are writing those rules. Yes.
Okay. Thanks. We all wanted to have this conversation again, didn't we? We all missed this from last.
All right. How about a motion on item nine C?
Move approval.
Is there a second? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Are we going to bring back chickens too? Have, have that discussion?
We'll bring back any changes the council would like to see, if you want to give us direction. If you recall, we had a little trouble getting direction on the last time.
That was just a little joke.
I have a wonderful ordinance that I offered that I'd be happy to bring back if you want to.
There is a constitutional amendment that would affect our right to regulate chickens, so we'll, we'll see whether or not that's approved by the voters.
All right. Item nine D is a public hearing. This has to do with the Western Avenue bid. Is there anyone here that showed up today hoping to speak on item nine D?
Leaver's opposition.
Okay. Let me turn to Councilman Chade. Are you, you want to make a motion on this item? This is the Western Avenue Business Improvement District, and it just would ratify it on an annual basis. He just wanted to speak if, if, if it appeared that it was in trouble of moving forward.
Oh, only the opposition.
Yeah.
Okay. It's all in.
All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. All right.
He's a companion item.
Yeah, we need to do both of them. So let's do item nine E as well. Ed, you'll make a motion.
Second.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item nine F and G has to do with our agreement with Yukon over a new park that's going to be built in the western part of the metro.
And also to provide some access for traffic improvements to some property at Check Hall on 10th Street.
It's not simple, but it is something that's been in the works for several months. Is there a motion on item nine F?
Second.
All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item nine G, how about a motion? This is the companion item.
Second.
Okay. Cast your votes. And nine G passes unanimously. Item nine H is an ordinance being introduced today, and this has to be in a, this has to do with an assessment district. It's being built in far north Oklahoma City on a new development.
Mayor, we do not need the emergency. It's simply being introduced today. It'll be on final hearing in two weeks.
All right. Item just being introduced today. We'll be setting up a public hearing for this in the future. Is there a motion to move it forward today?
I'd make a motion to move it forward.
Second.
All right. Cast your votes. And item nine H moves forward. We'll be having a public hearing in the future. Item nine A is I is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under nine I? All right. How about a motion?
Second.
Cast your votes. Nine I passes unanimously. Nine J is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under nine J? Okay. Come on forward.
Go straight ahead.
Good morning, and we'll need your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Denise Reed, and the address is 8525 Highland Avenue.
Okay.
Item B.
Yes.
And this property was sold in 2013, but the city still has it listed under my name. They said that they're going by the county records, and I have actual documentation.
Okay.
So I'm trying to not have to secure that structure, which would be out of pocket cost.
Because you don't own it anymore.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't blame you.
Could, could you repeat the address? Which address was this man?
This is 8525 Highland Avenue.
Highland.
This seems a little unusual, that our, the court records wouldn't reflect what she believes was a, was a sale of the property. Is that, is that unusual, that they, is there a reason there might be a lapse in the recording over there?
Sometimes there is a 10-day, give or take a week.
Well, why don't you give her your business card, and so we can, let us check it out, and I have no reason to believe that, that you're not correct and that we're dealing with some sort of older data.
Okay. And this is from 2009.
Okay. And then they can correspond back with you, all right?
Okay.
That would be, yes.
Okay.
All right. We have, we have a motion on the unsecured structures. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item 9K is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9K?
Move the object.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9L is a resolution that would adopt Plan OKC as the comprehensive plan of Oklahoma City.
Mayor, this is the culmination of many years of work to update the Oklahoma City Comprehensive Plan, and Aubrey Hamontry is here today to give us a presentation regarding the final plan.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I am so excited to be here today. Mr. Couch did say it's been a long time. It has been several years in the making. It's, we've, we've worked with several different staff members through this process, and I'm excited to be here to review this plan with you today. I know that several of you have participated in the creation of this plan and are familiar with it, but for the public, I'd like to go through a presentation that talks about how we use the plan and how we might be moving forward in the city to try to guide more efficient growth and development for the future. The comprehensive plan is actually a document that cities can adopt, and our state statutes provide for our city to adopt a plan. I'm going to read a little snippet of what the state statutes empower us to do through the adoption of a comp plan. It's to guide and accomplish a coordinated, adjusted, and harmonious development pattern for the city, which will best promote, in accordance with present and future needs, health, safety, prosperity, general welfare, efficiency and economy. It goes into talking about things like traffic, safety, pollution, healthful and convenient distribution of population, good civic design, and wise and efficient expenditure of public funds. That's a tall order. That's a lot of things for a plan to accomplish. It is a very broad plan for the city that different entities within the city government and private developers use in many different ways. So I'll talk through that. I wanted to start with the first slide, talking about what is a comprehensive plan. Oftentimes, a comprehensive plan is confused with zoning, in that cities dictate what can be built on parcels of land through zoning. It is not a zoning document. It is a guide document. It is not a regulatory structure. It is a framework that encourages efficient land use and all of the different attributes that I explained from the state statutes. It is a broad range of topics, as we just talked about, and it's not limited to the purview of city government. Even though this is the guide for how the city grows, it involves many recommendations that the community have developed together so that we can enter into public-private partnerships and that private development can look to as people make decisions about where to move and where to invest. So you might ask, why do we even need to plan? Because Oklahoma City is doing very well. We know that our residents in our citizen surveys say this is a great place to live. We're growing well. We're moving in the right direction. When we go out to meet with the community and we talk about concerns and issues with the community, we know that there are certain things we need to look ahead into the future and try to anticipate that we can do better. One of the things that all cities face is that our demographics and our population is changing. Where people choose to live, parts of the city that are declining, these are all the trends that we have to look to and anticipate to improve upon in the future. We also have to be mindful of economic development, fiscal sustainability, investments across the city, and make sure that as those investments are happening, that it's doing so in a way that does not detract from the stability and quality of our neighborhoods. Neighborhood health and safety and choices are a big theme that run through this plan. Not only choices of where people live and how they can be active, but how they can get around the city and make the best use of their time and their resources. The plan also addresses, as the city grows, to protect our natural and environmental resources and create a transportation system and a quality environment that suits all. So I wanted to talk how the plan is used. City leaders such as yourself use this plan in making decisions like you've done today on all the cases that you've voted on for rezoning applications. It guides decisions about, like I mentioned, where people live and where people invest. It's a framework guide for evaluating development proposals, and it helps to guide how expenditures such as our capital improvements plan are done across the city. Urban renewal plans are also meant to be in conformance with the city's comprehensive plans. Annexations and deannexations of land within the city are also evaluated to be in conformance with this plan. Subdivision regulations, municipal regulations, and Platts are all by state statute required to be in conformance with this plan. So it is a broad-based land use and development guide. So I wanted to talk about how the plan was developed over the years that we've been working on it and the planning process, and first, I want to talk about where we are right now with projecting growth. Right now, we have over 600,000 people within the municipal boundaries, 621 square miles. We're projecting by 2050 that we're going to be adding enough population and jobs to be the equivalent of four Edmonds or three Normans. So we have a large land area, and within that land area, we can accommodate this growth, but the question is, where will these people live, work, play, and learn, and how will they get around within the city? So to study that, we have to get lots of inputs into the planning process. We have done studies, analyses, surveys, and a big part of that is public input and citizen feedback. So I'll walk you through some of the things we've done to develop this comprehensive plan, and comprehensive in meaning that we have to look at every piece of all the factors that influence where development goes and how it impacts our lives. So to get in gear in developing the plan, we had to first do our groundwork, which is all the research, data compilation, analyses, looking at best practices of other cities. We then go to other plans and studies that have already been developed, so that we don't have to recreate anything that's already been done. So we were able to work with COTPA and the Fixed Guideway Study and the Transit Service Analysis. We had done some downtown housing strategies we were able to use in a vacant and abandoned building study. So these were all tools that were able to be utilized in helping to shape and develop parts of the comprehensive plan. But we also had gaps of things that we needed to understand better. Fortunately, we were able to get a grant by HUD to fund several studies. And so on the right-hand slide, the long list of things, were things that were funded by grants and partners. Over $800,000 were donated to the city to be able to do these studies, to understand where we are and where we're going. So some of those being, we looked at our housing demand, where are people wanting to live and what are their needs? A retail plan, how is our retail market doing, and how is retail distributed across Oklahoma City, and where are there opportunities for us to strengthen it and capture sales tax dollars inside our city where we have ample retail to support it? Parks, how well are our parks serving our existing population, and where can we anticipate the needs would be for future parks? Employment lands, understanding and recognizing pieces of land in Oklahoma City, excuse me, that can draw major retail, I mean, major employers to create jobs. We also did an extensive growth scenario analysis, looking at that 300,000 people and 170,000 jobs, and placing them across Oklahoma City, looking at different development patterns. An example of what those development patterns looks like is on your right, in looking at three different scenarios of how Oklahoma City can grow, and analyzing what the impacts would be of that growth on us, on our city. And overall, if we grew in those three different ways, what would be the impact to our public health? Cities use health impact assessments to understand what those variables are and put things in terms that people can really personally identify with. So in understanding all of these different things, we wanted to also go out to the public and share this information, get feedback. Part of it is understanding the tactical pieces of planning a city. The other is how people feel about their city and what they would like to see and what their priorities are for the future. So we did a number of surveys. Many of those were statistically significant surveys, so we made sure that we reached all of the different populations and groups of people from all of the different areas of the city. We wanted to know what the community's vision was. We did a vision survey. What issues were important to them? Of course, the surveys that accompanied some of those studies for housing survey and parks. Survey about community appearance. We surveyed businesses and an overall citizen survey to guide our policy development. Overall, we had about 22,000 people provide inputs to our surveys. We also engaged the public in many different ways. Previous planning efforts and across-the-country planning efforts usually would invite people to come to a public meeting, usually at a place like this, to City Hall. Today, people just really need to engage in different ways. Everybody is busy. Everybody has priorities. And so our goal for Plan OKC, you're so nice, thank you, Ian, was to reach people where they were, go to places that people were already meeting, and initiate types of involvement and engagement with people through different means. We knew that people wouldn't come down to City Hall to meet because they couldn't get here, so we developed tools like online feedback and other surveys so that we could get as many inputs as possible. So we held many different types of public meetings throughout the process, some special meetings focused on different groups, like the chamber, school districts, city managers from adjacent cities. We also created stakeholder groups so that people could work specifically on the areas that were important to them. These would be experts in things like transportation or environmental or economic development. And we had a group that we called our Healthy Communities Oversight Group. This group reviewed the policies coming out of all of those different subsets of the plan to make sure that those policies were guiding and directing a healthy future, healthy economy, healthy environment. And an overarching group of people who looked at recommendations composed of a citizen advisory team, and that team was composed of members of this council, members of our planning commission, members of the development sector, public schools, and representing each of our plan elements. We created a series of opportunities to provide online feedback for people and tools so that we could survey residents' values and priorities, engage how well they supported some of the ideas and policies coming out of the comprehensive plan. So as you can see from all of these different methods, through the course of developing the policies in the plan, it was a back-and-forth process of getting public engagement, getting feedback, putting it back out to the public, asking for input, and this went on for many iterations. So we feel like we've gotten a good sample, good participation of the city, and that this plan is really focusing on what the communities and the city, the people who form this city, their needs. And out of the, out of the priorities that we found from the city, there emerged some major themes or big ideas that this comprehensive plan is really encouraging and focusing on. And you might recognize some of these topics. I know that our city council has developed a set of council priorities that guide how the city and city departments respond to our needs, and you'll see many of them overlap with yours. Transportation choice and mobility, housing choice, healthy citizens, big focus, community attractiveness, thriving neighborhoods, efficient development, and natural character. I want to talk quickly how the plan is organized and used. It is broken up into three parts. The first part is called the Development Guide, and this is the part of the plan that you use on a day-to-day basis to guide new development proposals. When I talked about zoning across the city, you have existing zoning, which is an entitlement to develop that land in a certain way. When the comprehensive plan is consulted, is when there is a change proposed to zoning or a change proposed to how you're going to develop a piece of land moving forward. So this affects future growth and development. The next section of the plan are the initiative elements, and these are the different focus areas and topics that we just talked about of the plan, where we can create strategies and policies for those public-private partnerships, ways that we need to come together as a community to guide development beyond just evaluating those development proposals as they come into the city. And then the last piece, which is probably the most important piece, is taking all of those ideas and strategies and recommendations and putting them into a framework so that we can implement this plan, assign people who would be working on those different strategies and policies, and looking at priorities for getting the work done. So the first part of the Development Guide, the Development Guide contains, probably the most widely used piece of this plan is the Land Use Plan. The Land Use Plan was created based on the existing conditions in the city and how we want to guide future growth. We are now going to be using a different terminology called land use typologies, which I will explain in a second, and we've developed a system to create a way to evaluate compatibility within those areas of the city, so that as development happens, it's complementary to its neighbor. The next section of the Development Guide is the Infrastructure and Investment Section, and this is a new section of the comprehensive plan. We have not had this type of focus before in our comprehensive plans that look at how land use and our transportation network are built to complement each other, how they should be built to relate to each other. Access management and focus areas, this is one of those things, as development comes in, looking at corridors and how they function, and as development happens over time, sometimes you create some access issues along busy, busy corridors, and this is looking to the future to try to help solve some of those problems as they're developing. Where to focus retail nodes and corridors, and again, a guide for reviewing capital improvements. The Land Use Plan, as I mentioned, was based on the existing conditions, looking at service efficiency, suitability, and availability of land to accommodate growth. This is done through an extensive evaluation of all of our different infrastructure, services, and where we have capacity and room to support development and growth, and where we might look to the future to expand places in Oklahoma City to grow. We did it through our population projections. We did technical analyses to develop this Land Use Plan and extensive public input on how people felt they wanted to grow and where they wanted to live. The basic principles of looking at a Land Use Plan are making sure that as you, as you guide where development goes, what type of development goes where, that you consider the compatibility of those uses, the intensity of those uses, the transportation system, and the relationship to land use, and service efficiency. And so describing this, this new term, typology, replaces the term that we've used in our comprehensive plan for a long time, which was a land use designation. Well, it's not just as simple as a designation of one type of land use. A typology is a system that puts things together in groups. It's dividing things up, understanding that within any different part of Oklahoma City, we will have different types of development that live together, work together, play together. So now we have many different types of land use typologies designated. They range from open space and rural, rural having two different layers, two different levels of rural, a low-intensity and a medium-intensity rural designation. Urban types of development, and urban can also be split apart and classified into a low-intensity, medium, and high-intensity area, and then our downtown core. We also have a way now of looking at land use typologies and being able to target and influence even more specific types of development, like industrial development, employment, urban districts, transit-oriented development. These are layers over that base typology. So this really helps focus the type of development and growth we think would be appropriate in specific places in Oklahoma City. One thing I might like to highlight on, on that, if you go back one slide, previous slide, is that we now are looking into the future, and we have typology layers called reserve or preserve, where we're looking at where is the next phase of urban development going to occur? This is as we start to grow and develop in our existing urbanized areas, what would be the next level? And those areas are designated as urban reserves, so that when services and efficiency, efficient application of water, fire, police services are available to those areas, it can be released for urbanization. And those are years away, but it is protecting that land from urbanization and sprawl that we are not ready to support. So this is what it looks like when it goes on to the 621 square miles of Oklahoma City. If you're familiar with the city's current comprehensive plan and the Land Use Plan map, this map is a lot more granular. There's a lot more specificity and definition with all of those different land use typology layers. This really is a much more fine-grained, better guide of where development can go and the parameters for what that development looks like, the intensity of uses and such. That, one of the best things about Oklahoma City is that we have such a broad spectrum of different types of land uses and character across our city, different choices in housing, different styles of living. We want to support that, and as we start to grow and densify and fill in, we want to make sure that we develop and grow in a way where that development is complementary to its neighbor. So as I mentioned before about the compatibility matrix, we want to make sure that those things, when they exist together, do not exist with problems or conflicts. So we needed this tool to define what is land use compatibility. The comprehensive plan lays out a series of questions. So when development comes in, we ask it, does it fit the character of that land use typology area in terms of its densities, in terms of its appropriate or inappropriate uses? Does the development proposal meet basic measures of compatibility? And this is where we start to look at those impacts, traffic, building scale and site design, or operational impacts, and those would be things like noise, light, odors on the neighbors. If there are some of those issues or concerns that are raised between two different types of land uses that are going to be adjacent to each other, can you then create through design some sort of a mitigation of those impacts? So the plan offers many recommendations of how to do that, and a guide for someone to come in and look at two different types of uses to the neighbor to see if they're going to have those building scale, traffic, or operational impacts. And then it goes into a whole chapter about some of the ways that you could mitigate that. And sometimes it can't be achieved, but many times it can. We've also looked at street typologies across Oklahoma City. I know you're familiar with the functional classification of streets, that breaks streets up into categories like an arterial or collector or neighborhood street. Even though these have similar names, this doesn't work that way. If you think about Oklahoma City, if you stretch east and west across Oklahoma City, you can have an arterial street that goes from edge to edge, but the character of that street changes as it goes from a rural area to an urban area. What we're looking at here is classifying street typologies by the character of the street and the land uses that are supported on both sides of the street. So this is a guide to us, the city, in making future investments, so that if we are going to be building, or redoing, or expanding our transportation network, it is responsive to the type of land use that exists and it's complementary of that to support development in Oklahoma City. An example of what that might look like on a major arterial for two different classifications, an urban low-intensity or an urban medium-intensity, it lays out those principles, the distance of the road, the travelway, where pedestrian zone might be, where bicycle facilities might be located. So this really helps us to visualize how future streets can be developed and how that can support what's going on adjacent to the street. We also wanted to provide some... We also wanted to provide some focus on access management and highlight some of those corridors where access management is an issue, and put recommendations such as encouraging shared drives or interconnecting development with internal circulation, minimizing curb cuts along streets. And then the retail study that we looked at identified all the different areas or nodes within Oklahoma City that support retail development, and it categorized those into three categories to reaffirm those that are doing well, to revitalize those that need some strengthening, and to revision ones that might need, that have significant challenges and need wholesale change. The last section of Development Guide is capital improvements planning, how to review projects. We know we have many needs across the city in terms of infrastructure, so to look at what our existing conditions are in terms of infrastructure, and to help identify the priority of that investment on the highest need, levels of service that we have, the greatest effect and potential impacts that that investment might make to the population. As I mentioned, the second part of our plan focuses on those different elements, chapters of the plan dealing with transportation, environmental, communities. Each one of these chapters describes the existing situation that we have, describes issues that the community is facing, trends, outlines goals, and defines specific initiatives that we can take. An example that I've provided here is one from our Live OKC chapter, which is our Communities or Neighborhoods chapter, and it outlines the community's goals, might highlight goal number four here as an example of how the plan is organized. In neighborhood stability, the goal for neighborhood stability for the city is that Oklahoma City's neighborhoods are vibrant because they have high occupancy rates, a diverse housing stock, and well-maintained properties. The plan then goes into strategies or initiatives that we can tackle that, and we have identified which of the goals these strategies touch. So you can see the one I just read, number four. Each one of these initiatives helps to further that goal, if you look down the column on number four. So under each one of these different types of initiatives, it's then expanded. If you look at number seven, revitalize and stabilize urban neighborhoods, and then we'll go to the next slide, there are layers of strategies and policies for each one of these things which we can focus on and do to help achieve those goals. This is just one small example. There are hundreds of these initiatives and policies within the comprehensive plan. And those are organized within the Policies and Implementation Framework of How to Get Things Done. I'll show you just quickly. It's a very lengthy document in the back of the plan. Each policy is listed here, each policy, if you'll click one more time, references which goals it accomplishes. These aren't just goals within that element chapter, but there's many things that cross over in Plan OKC with each of these chapters. We know that land use impacts our transportation network, that development impacts the environment. So if there are goals expressed by the community that one of these initiatives touches, it may touch many goals throughout the plan, and this demonstrates which goals it touches, and then who is responsible for implementing each of those. And this is the last slide that talks about where people can learn more about Plan OKC. We have developed a great website. This is a tool that we've needed for many years. When people need to go find something and they have to leaf through a document this thick, it's not very user-friendly. So the website now contains links. You can go to topic areas, you can go directly to that Development Guide if you have a project in mind to look at what applies to you as you're contemplating development. You can download pieces of the plan if you don't want to download the entire document. So it's a very user-friendly resource to the community and developers. With that, I'd like to answer any questions you have, and then I'd like to say a few thanks.
Yeah, Ed?
So I have two questions. First would be, we've heard Pete talk about how you can predict where development will occur based on water infrastructure, and then we heard some good evidence from ACOG to that effect. What is in the comprehensive plan about water, infrastructure development, and how would this interplay with, how would the Water Trust use this going forward?
Yeah, we worked hand-in-hand with utilities in developing our efficiencies maps and looking at how we can serve, how much we can serve different parts of Oklahoma City through the existing infrastructure that we have to provide water, and projecting out in the future based on their service efficiency studies and their projections for needs. So as we learn more, when they do their studies separately from the Planning Department, this is their business that they know and understand, we can work together on this plan to open up new areas of the city that are going to be able to get to support more development. So it is a very iterative process, but at this point in time, everything that we've reflected in the plan is something that utilities has provided that information, and we've worked with them on the provision of water.
So are there guidelines or recommendations for development of water infrastructure, or is there...
Right now, this plan is responding to efficiency of what we have in the ground, and we are holding areas that we cannot provide full urban services to in that urban reserve layer. So as we're able to expand all of the infrastructure needed to support urban development, we can then go up and reevaluate those land use classifications. It's not just water that we would be looking at to urbanize an area. It would be the transportation network, it would be fire and police service, sewer availabilities. There are many, many factors beyond just provision of water.
Okay. So the second question is, as we approach, starting to put together a priority list for the general obligation bond, 2017 or whatever, how would this be incorporated in that process? How would you see that bond process going forward, and how would this be utilized towards that effort?
We've done a lot of analysis to get a good understanding of what we have on the ground right now and what the needs are. And so we have wonderful technology that we can utilize these days to assist with that process. We know where there are gaps in our sidewalk system, we know where infrastructure and streets and connections of roadways, bridges, things like that, might need to be placed in the future to support areas that we're anticipating are going to grow, that need that connectivity or need those resources. So we've been compiling the data through developing this plan that we can go back and bring those projects forward as potential recommendations for investment in the future. So we are working along with Public Works on all of the things they know, infrastructure-wise we need, plus this document helps identify what priorities there are of the community in terms of quality of life investments. The Parks Master Plan, for example, looked at places in Oklahoma City that we anticipate will grow that may not have full levels of service for parks, where we can start getting ahead of it and looking at what those needs are and costing them out.
Councilman, in the 2000 and the 2007 GeoBond issues, we spent a lot of money on widening roads where development had gotten ahead of us. I know you have some concerns with some of the densities of some of those in some of the areas. That being said, we filled in a whole bunch of those areas. And so as we go forward to the 217 or 218 GeoBond issue, we'll be less focused on those type of improvements, and I think as you see from our citizen survey that'll be presented here in a little bit, we're probably going to need to be more focused on more of the infrastructure that we have of maintaining that and bringing that to a higher level. So I think you're going to see a little bit of shift of the priorities as we go forward.
Great, thank you.
Aubrey, just huge kudos to you and your staff. It's really wonderful to finally have this in front of us, and I just wanted you to know that I actually used it last night with a neighborhood issue, and was able to go to page 50, look at the Land Use Plan. I couldn't exactly understand a piece of it, so I need to ask Ian a question later, but it really is going to be helpful for us, just talking to our neighbors with issues that they have coming forward.
Thank you, and we would love to have any type of training that we need to do to help people understand how to use it. It is a new plan, a new format, a new system, so we expect that we'll have some conversations of exactly how you go in. And the website would be a helpful tool. If you ever have the ability to pull it up on your phone and go to that map, then you can talk through what those different classifications mean. And I wanted to mention, City Manager said about residents focusing resources on developing areas where infrastructure already exists. That was a question of our citizen survey, and 64% of our residents said that they would like us to focus those resources in areas where infrastructure already exists.
I think one of the ways this is going to be judged a success or not has to do with whether or not it's a sustainable model going forward. We look backwards from here, and what we see is that we've allowed way too much expansive growth on the perimeter of the city, and now we have these ongoing maintenance issues and trying to keep our streets up, and the urban sprawl is a classic example in our city. And I think what we can safely say is that this plan is more sustainable, but you know, time will only tell whether or not it is sustainable. I know we have some impact fee information coming in the next few months that has to do with that. But it's all part of a very complicated formula going forward, but we've got to get on a sustainable or minimally a more sustainable model going forward. And I appreciate all the work and the feedback that you took, because I know there was a lot of council opinions into this, as well as the citizen prospect.
Mayor, I want to take the opportunity to thank both Aubrey and Jeff and Ian are here this morning, but the whole Planning Department staff put in a lot of time and effort over years on this process, but also the Council Steering Committee that, for the Council sat on, the planning commissioners that were involved in this, the numbers of people from the development community, all kinds of different community groups, neighborhood associations that participate in this. This has really been a pretty inclusive process, in my opinion, over the last several years on it. So thank you for those efforts.
I would love to just roll through a couple of slides because there happen so many different people and pieces in place. The first one that I want to highlight is all the grants and donations that came in to help shape this plan. HUD, City County Health Department, Department of Commerce, and Oklahoma City Community Foundation, all contributed resources. Many consultant projects were funded through that. And then City Manager did mention the Planning Commission and Council, and specifically, Councilman Shadid, Councilman White, Greenwell, and Pat Ryan participated on the citizen advisory team from Council. And then those stakeholder groups that City Manager mentioned, and citizen advisory team that was composed of different residents and developers and people from the school board, and then again, the city staff that have been involved since day one. I might just mention specifically Ken Bryan, who's been here since the beginning. I think his tenure is probably the longest served of any staff, but we've gotten a lot of new staff members that have come along board over time that have contributed amazing things to this plan. And some of our former city staff had their mark on the plan. Our former Planning Director Russell Klaus and Susan Miller also were very involved in developing this plan. But I think one of the things I wanted to highlight about it was the participating city departments. We really had an unprecedented experience of involvement and collaboration within our city and within the city departments, where everybody came to multiple meetings, sat down at the table, provided data and research and analyses as Dr. Shadid had asked about. With the technology that we have and use inside city government, it's a different day in doing planning now. We did not have these tools and resources when we'd done plans of the past. So this was a really inclusive effort, and we really learned a lot, I think, between city departments, how we can help, how everybody can come together to help guide more efficient and sustainable growth across the city.
Mayor, one of the things I appreciate about it is that we have a, I believe we have a very unique situation in planning for Oklahoma City. It's just a different city. It would be much simpler if you were planning for a city like St. Louis, or cities that are Wichita, or cities that are pretty well-defined, their boundaries are pretty well-defined. We probably have more cities that touch Oklahoma City than, and then surrounded by lots of times vacant land, really. It just makes a planning problem that I think is pretty unique for Oklahoma City. I appreciate the fact that some energy was given to the philosophy that I have, which is that one thing Oklahoma City provides that most other cities don't is the ability to live in any kind of situation you choose. You can live on a farm, you can live on a ranch, you can live on a high-rise, you can live just about any lifestyle you choose and still live inside the city. And I felt like there were a lot of energy was put into protecting, preserving that idea, and so I appreciate that personally.
Could I ask for our staff to stand? I know many people are in the room today, and I just would love for you all to see the Planning Department staff and acknowledge their work on the plan.
Yeah, thank you.
I could. I would like to thank everybody that just stood up. I have really enjoyed reviewing this. The one thing that I learned from it, I think the last time something of this magnitude was attempted was back in 1978, and so my hat's off to the staff. Thanks for all your hard work. And I think that a lot of people came and gave input to this, and I'm hoping that we will have classes that will educate people about it in the future.
We certainly will do that. And one last comment about the plan is that I've reinforced this message to everybody I've presented the plan to, and it's not a static document. This is not, adopting this plan today doesn't mean that that's the document we have to use for the next 20 years. This will be updated frequently. We will be adapting this plan as our city grows and changes. It's a living, breathing document, and we have the ability now to be able to respond to those changing environments and make this plan effective, improve upon it over time as we work with it. So to your comment, we will be working with the community on understanding how to use the plan, and if there are changes that are needed to help make it a better plan, we'll be able to respond quickly to do that.
All right. Any other comments or questions, Council? All right. Aubrey, thank you, and our best to your staff. We appreciate it very much. Anything else? All right, item 9M.
We need a motion.
Okay, so we need a motion on 9L, and this would be the Council's adoption as Plan OKC. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9M is an update on our Emergency Operations Plan.
Aubrey just gave a nice segue into documents that are not static and living and breathing and need to be changed. This is what we're going to do with the Emergency Operations Plan today. Frank Barnes is here, our Emergency Operations Manager. One of the things that I think we do pretty well is emergency response, probably because of our opportunity to have had a lot of chances to respond to emergencies over the last few years. Last summer, we did take a large contingency to Amiensburg, Maryland for a week-long emergency management training class. Councilman Greenwell went along with Councilman Ryan to that, and I think it was enlightening for all of us to see the interaction between, among city staff in those processes. Frank?
Thank you. The city's Emergency Operations Plan is reviewed annually. We use a collaborative approach that involves city departments and various stakeholders, both private sector and NGO, to provide input and to review any changes to the plan. We use our local planning and preparedness committee to both provide input, to review the changes, and then approve the changes and recommend they be forwarded to the City Council. We have the Municipal Counselor's Office review the plan and provide input as well, and then we bring it forward to the City Council for you to adopt it per the City Municipal Code. The revisions that we have made this year could best be described as light, and this reflects or is a testament to both the quality of the plan and a plan that has been developed over the years based on our real-world experiences. It's also a testament to the quality of the response and recovery efforts that the city departments and their staffs provide to the city and the citizens of our city. So in the basic plan, we simply just updated some language predominantly centered around the city's multi-agency coordination center and making sure that the language in the basic plan may match the language in Appendix F. And we also added some language in the Finance Administration and Logistics Section about compliance with federal procurement standards and regulations, commonly, or now known as 2 CFR 200. We also added a separate section regarding the Public Assistance Program, which FEMA has that provides the city with reimbursement for disaster-related response and recovery costs, as well as reimbursement for permanent repairs to damaged infrastructure and city In Appendix F, we simply added one word, the word "city" at the end of Oklahoma, so it now reads the city of Oklahoma City. You know you have a pretty solid plan, when the people reviewing it, you're getting down to these kinds of minor revisions. In the Warning Annex, we added one radio station to it that was missing. In the Public Works and Utilities, Emergency Support Function Number Three, we updated the resource appendix with the equipment that is used by Solid Waste Management. We had one wording addition under our Emergency Support Function Number Eight, which is Public Health and Medical Services. Under Energy, we had one wording change. One of the companies changed its name from Seminole to Continuum Energy. This is one of the pipeline companies that provides natural gas. Probably the most significant change was in what we call Emergency Support Function Probably the most significant change was in what we call Emergency Support Function Number 14, which is Long-Term Recovery and Reconstruction. And the changes reflect the current doctrine that FEMA has, and they have a doctrine where we should, as a city, have a pre-disaster recovery plan, and then after the disaster, you create a post-disaster recovery plan. So, ESF 14 has now been re-designated as the city's pre-disaster recovery plan. It also reflects organizational changes that took place July 1st. We added a more comprehensive list of federal disaster assistance that's available. We updated the Damage Assessment and Disaster Assessment Section, so it matches the basic plan. And we also revised the Responsibility Section with regards to the Planning Department, the Office of Sustainability, and Urban Renewal. And then, lastly, ESF 15, which is External Affairs, there were just some minor updates with terminology, and we added Information Technology as one of the supporting departments. And so, those were the revisions that we made this year. Any questions? Told you they were pretty light.
All right, questions for Frank? All right, Frank, thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right, and we need a motion to approve item 9M.
Leave the items.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9N is a salary continuation. I understand we do not need executive session on this item. How about a motion then to approve item 9N?
Leave the items.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9O, understand we do not need executive session, so our motion to strike would be in order.
Leave the strike.
Cast your votes. Item is struck from the agenda. Item 9P is Claims Recommended for Denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9P? All right, how about a motion then?
Leave the items.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item 10A is Claims Recommended for Approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any of these items? All right, how about a motion then to approve item 10A?
Leave the items.
Cast your votes. And it passes unanimously. That puts us on to items from Council, and we'll start with a resolution that would approve travel arrangements for myself and Councilman McAtim Pettis and the National League of Cities coming up in November. Is there a motion there?
Leave the items.
All right, cast your votes. That item approves unanimously. Elsewhere, items from Council. James, you have anything for us today?
We have another resolution.
Oh, missed item 9B. I'm sorry, 11, 11B. This is a motion for Councilman Pettis to attend a National League of Cities event in Miramar, Florida. How about a motion there?
Leave the items.
All right, cast your votes on item 11B, and it passes unanimously. Now, James. All right, Ed?
Yeah, I read with interest this article Bill Crum did on the financial disclosures. He actually did me a favor, because he helped me realize that mine wasn't in, so I addressed that. But he was asking me a lot of questions that I couldn't answer. I'm still not sure I understand quite a bit about it. And if it wouldn't have been so, if it was, if I knew it was so simple, I think I would have dealt with it a long time ago. But one is just the investments. I guess I understood, I thought you had to put your investments, but really, we just have to put the bank, I guess, and is that, does it matter if that bank deals with bonds?
You might want to talk to the Ethics Commission, because they can explain it more succinctly. Did you meet with them at some point in the last year?
We have, but I have a specific question about our ordinances, because now we have two. We have the state, and then we have the city gift policy. So, we have to declare if we receive a gift. This says that we have to declare any kind of financial of any sort with a lobbyist. So, I guess one question would be, how do you know if somebody's a lobbyist? There's a mechanism for that, I guess.
They'll be registered as a lobbyist.
Where do you find that?
On the Ethics Commission website. They're registered as lobbyists.
So, if you, if you have any kind of financial relationship with a lobbyist, you have to report it. If they're not a lobbyist, and you receive a gift, I get, we have a city policy that says you have to declare that. What happens if you, if you receive a gift and it's to your business, it's not you individually? Say I wanted to build a surgery center or something, and I went to constituents in the ward, and I asked them for a donation to my business to help me get that surgery center built, because there would be a public benefit to that. What would I do then? I mean, is that, would you have to declare that under the city's gift policy?
You might just call, maybe ask if you have to declare it.
Why? But legally, I mean, with the city's gift policy, if somebody gives me a gift personally, I have to declare it. If they give me to my business, do I have to declare it?
You would have to look at the gift ordinance and see on that specific question.
I think you'd have to go beyond it into the intent of the ordinance, and if that gift was meant to influence you, or something along those lines.
But if it's not meant to influence me, then I can receive a gift to my business, and I don't have to declare that.
I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but I believe it has to be someone that's doing business with the city. It's not just someone gives you a personal gift, and they're not trying to get some type of approval from them.
So, if they don't do business with us?
Need to look at the language of the ordinance specifically.
Can you help me with that? Can you look at it and get back with?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to report on a great neighborhood meeting last week that the Windsor Forest Neighborhood Association had. And after that meeting, the next, there was, outside of that meeting, there was a meeting held under the auspices of Sergeant Scala, with an apartment complex in our area, and also a neighborhood president, and that was very positive. And I'd like to announce to the folks that may not have heard this news, that the Attorney General's grant for the area from basically Council Road to Meridian, and from Reno up to northwest about 20th Street for additional police and support in that area, has been reestablished for another year, and the progress is being made. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Pete?
I would, actually discretion being the better part of valor, I'm not going to comment on the gifts from lobbyists thing, because it might cause my wife not to buy me a birthday present this year.
All right. David?
Just quickly, congratulations to our Parks Department for their continued efforts. I get to utilize these parks all the time, and they're really a great asset to the city. And I don't know when it began, but the concept of making these splash pads versus a traditional swimming pool, I think, has been very helpful. And I'm sharing this just based upon my grandchildren's experience. They really enjoy that, and I see a lot of children doing that. And last week, we even went to Early Wine Swimming Pool, which is not your traditional type of swimming pool, in that most of it, the entire pool, is very shallow. And again, for children, it cools them off, lets them play, and I just think we've got a very great system of parks here in Oklahoma City. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Meg? All right, John? Mark?
Yeah, just briefly, I want to thank Officer Travis Vanir and Officer Amy Hansen. If you haven't seen the article, you can see it on News OK or Google News. There were two officers that came upon a 75-year-old lady. Her predicament was a broken-down scooter. She was trying to get to the Walmart to buy a birthday cake for her 75th birthday, and they took her in, they took care of her. As a result of that, this thing went viral. Ms. Carroll received gifts, cards, money for her repair of her motorized scooter, so I'd like to thank the two officers for their act of kindness. I'd also like to congratulate Battalion Chief Kirk Wright. He represented Oklahoma City in the World Police and Fire Games, and there were participants from all over the world, Malaysia, Russia, China, the Netherlands. And he won the Senior Division at age 52, the golf tournament in the World Police and Fire Games, by eight strokes, and as a result of that, is invited to represent Oklahoma City again in the 2017 Games in Montreal. So, I'd like to congratulate Chief Wright.
Fabulous. All right, City Manager reports.
Thank you. This morning, we have Chris Tatham here this morning. Chris has been with us. Chris, how many years have you been here?
It's getting close to a decade, so.
Okay, he's been here about 10 years, providing, the ETC has provided our citizen surveys, and we completed another citizen survey, and Chris is here this morning to present the results.
Great. Mayor, member of the council, it's a pleasure to be back. For those of you who aren't familiar with our firm, we're based in Kansas City, but we do work for communities across the country. I've now actually managed more than 2,000 surveys over the last 20 years, and our company does work with nearly 900 communities. We just recently went through our databases, and we had data for more than 2 million U.S. residents. So, I'll kind of give you some comparisons on how Oklahoma City stacks up to kind of national norms for other large communities, and that's the basis for it. So, and there are just a few communities that we have done work in recently here as well. But today, I thought I'd walk you through, I know most of you are familiar with the purpose of the survey. In many ways, it's kind of like an annual well-health physical. You go to the doctor and find out, a lot of things have happened. You had a lot of flooding here and rains. I heard it was your wettest May in history. And typically, when something like that happens, it can really test whether or not people really have a lot of confidence in their local government. The good news is, they do, and I'll show you why in just a little bit. So, I'll walk you through what we did, kind of what our major findings are, and if you have questions while I'm here, be more than happy to answer them. So, as far as the purpose of the survey, it's really to give you an objective assessment of what the average resident thinks about how well you're providing services, give you some feedback of what they think about priorities are, and help you travel, you know, really see how you do over time. We did a national survey about two years ago of a little over 4,000 U.S. residents, and we asked them whether or not they'd been to a local city council meeting in the last year. And you can probably aren't going to be surprised that a whopping 7% said yes. And if on further, more detailed question, people often overstated that. They went three years ago, but it seemed like it was last year. We then asked people, well, why did you go to the meeting? And there were three responses that accounted for over 90% of the responses. The first one was, they went there to get an award or watch somebody get an award. The second one is they were there to advocate for something that was in their personal interest. And the third was they were to complain or express their dissatisfaction with something the city was doing. So, as a result, you typically aren't going to hear from most residents. You're going to hear from people who want to make changes that are going to benefit them personally, or you're going to hear people who don't like what you're doing. The average resident is just going to go about their life, expect good services, and never going to tell you. And so, a survey like this really helps you put into perspective what the average citizen thinks about how well the city's doing and whether or not you're moving in the right direction. So, with that said, this year's survey was administered to a little over 1,300 residents. We try to get at least 1,200 each time we do the survey. It's not perfect, but it gives you an accuracy of about plus or minus 2.6% at the 95% level of confidence. That just means if you did the survey 100 times, you probably get the same results with it about 3% or less. So, it's a good measure for assessing how you're doing. We allow people to participate by mail and phone. We use cell phones, and it's done in both English and Spanish to make sure we get good representation from the entire community. And if you actually look at the census, the demographics of the people who respond to the survey, it closely mirrors to the most recent census estimates for the city. So, we feel you have a very good sample. We also do GIS mapping, where we actually plot the location of the respondents, and you can see where more people live, the more denser areas have more responses, but we get good distribution from the entire city. And that allows us to provide maps that show you how people in different parts of the city actually view the quality of service delivery. So, all in all, we think, once again, you have a very good representative sample. So, with that, these are our conclusions this year. Despite the survey being done during and immediately after your most intense rain period I've heard since May, people still have great confidence in the city. Your overall satisfaction rating's 19% above the national average, and we've seen things like this place to live, place to raise children, and place to work, all improved compared to a year ago. You're doing a good job of equitably providing services. You're one of the largest, if not the largest, I think maybe second-largest geographically in the country. Yet despite that, the overall satisfaction levels are fairly uniform regardless of where people live, which is something you can be very proud of. But maintenance is still the top issue. It's your last year of streets. That's going to continue to be something you'll want to take a look at. But what impresses me is even though there's dissatisfaction with streets, it's not compromising people's overall confidence in the direction the city's headed. So, I think at the end of the day, you're doing a lot of things right to overcome that issue. As far as the perceptions, the first couple of slides just highlight what I mean by having a positive perception. We ask residents to rate things on a scale of 1 to 5. Fours and fives are excellent and goods, or maybe satisfied or very satisfied. You can see in this chart, we have them rate the city as a place to live, work, raise children, to rate the city as a city, whether or not it's moving in the right direction, place to retire, visit, and whether or not you demonstrate sustainability. One of the most important questions, at least in my opinion, on the survey is right in the middle of this, when residents rate, is the city moving in the right direction? You'll see only 6% of the respondents give negative ratings. On the other side of the House, you'll look at 80% actually think you are either doing a good or excellent job in that regard. So, for every person who complains about the direction you're moving, it's about 14 out there that actually feel good about the direction the city. And this was done immediately after your heavy rainfall, and that's very unusual to get such large or high numbers like that when you've had a major incident unless you're responding the way residents feel. The other piece I want to highlight here is the percent that are giving excellent. Almost over 33%, or in this case, it's actually almost 4 in 10, give you a 5 on a 5-point scale. That's what we call brand equity, where people feel really good about the direction the city's headed. They could easily give you a 4, but people are giving you a 5 on a 5-point scale. So, I don't think that's accidental. I think you all are leading the city in a way most residents feel very good about. So, in addition, we asked them to rate things like quality of life, your downtown, how well you're planning. I know you just went through your planning, your comprehensive plan. Only 10% of residents really have any concerns about your planning for growth. On the other side of the House, you'll see 67% or 2 out of 3 people give positive ratings for how the city's planning for growth, so almost a 7 to 1 ratio of positives to negatives. In addition, one of the most important indicators, as well as the overall satisfaction with the overall quality of city services, only 5% of residents are dissatisfied compared to 67% are giving positive ratings. So, again, for every person who complains, and you see the city's doing a terrible job providing services overall, there's actually 13 people out there that feel exactly the opposite. So, with that said, congratulations, you continue to do a very, very good job. On the other side of the House, you will see that when it comes to some of the individual services that you do provide, many of them, like fire, ambulance, police, get very high ratings, but as you work your way down the list, you'll see those related to streets, transportation continue to be rated lower. But from my perspective, it's very interesting that even though you see low ratings there, they're not resulting in a corresponding negativity or a negative attitude toward the city overall, which suggests that even though there is dissatisfaction there, it's not causing people to be unsatisfied with the overall direction the city is going. But you can see traffic flow, public transit, your condition of streets. And your condition of streets frankly have lots of opportunity for improvement. 72% were dissatisfied. So, that's going to continue to be a high priority as it has been in the past, but all in all, you're doing a great job. As far as how you stack up to other communities, I think one of the things you may forget or not realize as you go throughout the year when you're dealing with project after project and request after request is that in spite of everything, you're doing an amazing job. This chart shows how City of Oklahoma City in blue stacks up to our national average for communities with over 250,000 residents. You'll see the blue arrows pointing up indicate that you rate significantly better than the national average. When we say you're setting the standard, that means you're more than 10% above the national average, and you can see across the board when it comes to the place to work, place to live, raise children, retire, when it comes to the overall quality of city services and how well you're planning for growth, you're setting the standard in all those areas. In fact, when it comes to planning for growth, you're almost double the national average. Think, most large communities only have 1 in 3 residents giving positive ratings for how they're planning for growth. You get 2 out of 3 getting positive ratings. And on your overall quality of city services, 2 out of 3 give positive ratings compared to fewer than half in most communities. So, again, you're doing very well. When we look at how you stack up as far as some of the major categories of city services, you can see when it comes to customer service and how you communicate, you're doing extremely well there. You'll see your Parks and Recreation ranks a little bit below. It's not that there's a lot of dissatisfaction with your parks, but our indicators are basi- It's not that there's a lot of dissatisfaction with your parks, but our indicators are based on positive ratings. You have a lot of people who are giving 3 or okay ratings. So you can do better as far as the percent that are giving you fours and fives. But you will see on code enforcement and particularly streets, those are the 2 areas where you have the least comparative advantage. You can see streets is at 11% compared to the national average of 33%, which is one of the reasons why you see such a high priority, I believe, from your residents on that issue. And then when it comes to things like utility services, you can see you're doing great across the board. And utilities are important because that's one of the places where staff interact the most frequently with residents. And cities that don't do utility services well oftentimes have problematic issues related to customer service. And the fact that you're doing a good job providing utilities, I think, is contributing to the overall perceptions that people have of the quality of customer services that you're providing. In addition, when we looked at some of the maps, when you look at the full report, you'll see dozens and dozens of maps. So for today, I'm not going to go through all of the maps, but I do want to just highlight the overall quality of city services. And remember that, I know you all know the geographic scope, and I think about cities that we do surveys for, many are 20 square miles and 15 square miles or 50 square miles. And here, you're over 600 square miles, which I think is larger than many countries. And I see a map that's pretty much almost the same shade of blue. In other words, regardless of where people live, you'll see a couple of exceptions that are dark blue, which gives you very satisfied, or a little off-white, there's the more the neutral rating. But for the most part, you're delivering the same level of service regardless of where people live, given their expectations for the service. And that's very, very difficult to do in large geographic areas. So at the end of the day, regardless of where people live, they have about the same level of satisfaction with the overall quality of city services. There are some exceptions for individual services, but for the most part, you're doing an equitable job of delivering those services. As far as things to take a look at as you're moving into the future, just some of the short-term changes from last year to this year. A couple of things that we noticed is perceptions of just the community indicators of places to work, raise children and live. Those all went up significantly. Information about city services and programs improved significantly compared to last year, as well as your website. So those are some of the areas that made notable decreases. Areas that decreased from last year were perceptions of park maintenance, your streets, your code enforcement. But it's not unusual, after big flooding issues, to see decreased ratings with streets, code enforcement, and maintenance of facilities and parks, which oftentimes are impacted negatively by debris and other things that result from flooding. So that didn't surprise me that much.
Chris, didn't code enforcement peak a little bit last year?
It did. Code enforcement went up a lot, and so it actually returned more to where it's been historically. So you had kind of the opposite effect last year, as we had an abnormally high increase. This year, we did the survey right after the storm. But, you know, all in all, when I look at your overall ratings, I don't see anything major to be concerned about, given that your overall satisfaction levels continue to be very, very high.
Chris, what's the detail on that enforcing sign regulations? Is that people running stop signs and things?
No, typically, that tends to be with people who post signs like, you know, lose weight, call, you know, Jim Bob, that this number, you know. Those are the kinds of signs. Sometimes it can be with your commercial signage, too. We don't break it down to specific, but those are the kinds. Sometimes there can be annoyances, signs that even commercial folks put out, and how well you're controlling that, given what people's expectations. So that did drop this year as well. But again, those kinds of things sometimes can be impacted when there's flooding and a lot of debris and things floating around. That can sometimes impact that. As far as your top priorities as you move ahead, without a doubt, streets are it. They've been the top priority for residents. More people pick condition of streets as their top priority than they do for the top 3 issues combined in any other category. You see that overall, almost 8 in 10 residents think streets should be one of the top priorities for the city. Police actually has the second highest percentage of first-place choices. It's in 3rd overall with the combined top 3. And you can see traffic flow is the 2nd with the top 3, but it has slightly fewer people are giving it as a first choice. But streets will continue to be a high issue, and you see that. One of the things that we do as part of our analysis is we look at not just how well you're doing, but also the relative importance of the issue. And the idea is, if you were doing terrible in something that nobody cared about, probably don't have to worry about it. In other words, if nobody's worried about the problem, and you invest $1 billion in it, nobody's going to notice, or they're going to think you used the money unwisely because they might have thought it needed to go somewhere else. The things that tend to be the top priorities are things that people care a lot about, and they're not satisfied with your current performance. And you can see that 90 -- or 79% of residents picked streets as one of their top priorities, and it was the lowest-rated service, which is the reason it has the highest investment priority ranking through this analysis. And this is for those of you who like, who are left-brained and like lists. If you like pictures, this is the same information. We just show what, from left to right, is how important the service is. From bottom to top is the overall satisfaction. And the things that tend to be the higher priority are those that are higher importance with lower satisfaction, which you can see are in the bottom right. And that condition of streets really stands out when you look at this chart. Police is something that people, you're doing a good job at, but people want you to continue doing a good job in that area. So just when it comes to some of the areas, we broke it down further. In code enforcement, it was the cleanup of debris. That was the area that people thought was the most important area to emphasize. Maintenance, as I already mentioned, were streets, both major and neighborhood streets. And in parks and recreation, it was your walking and biking trails, and the maintenance of city parks. So overall, it's streets, but when we looked into some of the departmental areas, we got some insights as to how you might perform better in that departmental area of service. So just again, to summarize, overall, despite a challenging spring, people continue to feel very, very good about the direction the city's headed. Only 6% are dissatisfied. 80% feel you're moving in the right direction, and your overall satisfaction rating continues to tower among, compared to other large communities. But I think the streets issue isn't going away. The good news is, it hasn't negatively affected the overall perception of the city, which I think means that you're doing a lot of other things right. So with that, I don't know if there's any questions or anyone has questions for me while here. Mayor would be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Remind us when the survey was done and how many responded?
Late May through June, and we had 1,370 respondents.
Okay.
Mayor, because of the street rating, I did ask Eric to put together some of the efforts that we're doing on streets. It's very important. We're not ignoring the condition of streets. We know we've got some challenges out there. And so I've asked Eric just to put together a list of some of the things that we're doing. Some are existing, some are new. But the magnitude of the number of potholes we've repaired over the last few months is significant, and we are continuing multi-phases of street maintenance efforts.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. City Manager. I think one of the things that we realize is that our 2007 bond issue provides for the majority of our street improvements in Oklahoma City. Of that bond issue, which is nearly $800 million, 500 of it is towards streets, and we're completing more streets each and every year. One of the indicators that I've brought to you in the past is what we call the PCI index, the Payment Control Index. It's a scale of 0 to 100 on our streets, and that has been ever-increasing each year. So about 4 years ago, it was a 60 out of 100, and we're talking about the average of all streets together. We're just this past year now at a 64. So we are moving in the right direction from a quality perspective, but I think, as mentioned in the survey, having some of the storms and things that we experienced in the last month coinciding with also the survey. Number we've also used, we average about 80,000 potholes a year. It's a large number that we like to reduce. Just since May 1st, we've already fixed 35,000 potholes just from May 1st until today. And so we had a significant pothole challenge that streets has been very active on. And I do think that that probably went towards the survey somewhat when we start talking about satisfied citizens with our streets. But we've got a number of other programs, which you saw in your council agenda today, of course, is our partnerships with Oklahoma County. We also have great partnerships with Cleveland County as we continue to do roadway improvements all across the city, so it's not just the bond issue. We also, 3 past years, now we didn't get to do this last year, but we've also had council support for general fund resurfacing projects. So those occurred in '11, '12, and '13. We unfortunately didn't have an opportunity to visit that last year in '14, but we are starting to hear some of the council's interest in possibly reconsidering that for 2015. And that's where we had $1 million for each ward to really prioritize against some of those projects, non-bond projects, but be able to get out there and do some additional resurfacing. I think the last point that I'll leave you with, we've had a lot of focus on the bond issue in that it is widening and streetscapes, and that's been a primary focus over the last couple of years. We have a lot of bond-issue dollars that are just strictly for resurfacing, and we're starting to make that trend and that switch over to predominantly resurfacing-type projects. So we expect that that PCI number, the actual quality of streets, to continue to increase. We're also supplementing that with our micro-surfacing and our chip seal programs, and then we're continuing to look at some other technologies as well that help us bring those good streets and maintain them, making sure that we don't lose them in the future.
Then we will be bringing back an opportunity for council to consider using some fund balance for more resurfacing in the next month or so.
Okay. Eric, thank you.
There's also the hotel tax collections through June 30th. They're just a little bit under target, but they're still pretty strong.
They growing?
They're growing. And we'd be happy to answer any questions regarding that.
We have a couple of people who have signed up to be heard this morning. I'll ask them to keep their comments to 3 minutes or less. The first is Stephen White.
Congratulations on your recent report card, Bravo. I'm Stephen White. I live at 2716 Northwest 44th Street in Oklahoma City. That's in the Mayfair Heights Urban Conservation District. And my particular street specifically is between Stinson and North Miller. I have confidence in this city and understand that maintenance of our streets, of course, as we've been told just recently, is a top issue. I'd like both consistency and transparency, however, with the city regarding the use of asphalt to repave our neighborhood as opposed to what has been going on for the last 60 years in my neighborhood. In my neighborhood and our streets going east and west, it's concrete. My particular street, if you were to walk down my street, there's one major crack in the whole block, and the south half of my street had fairly recently been redone in concrete, and it's a very smooth street. I have several reasons why I'm opposed to asphalt being put on, directly on concrete. The cracks and problems you have geophysically below are still going to be present, and you're still going to have cracks eventually through residents and other engineering reasons to come up. But that's kind of a sidebar. The real problem is the disconnect I hear from the manager of this project, Jed Mays, on July 14th, as opposed to comments I heard from Ahmed Al Azani, who spoke with me at length, that the city would not just point-blank pave over with asphalt. They'd take it case by case. They would look at the street, have a rational approach. But when I talked with Mr. Mays, he said, "No, we're just going to asphalt it. We're just going to go asphalt all the way on the streets." And the problem that I have also with asphalt is that the fresh asphalt presents a potential carcinogenic problem with the benzene emissions that will happen, and the ozone that's going to be, when we have our heat aversions in August, I hear this project's going to go on in August, that when we have the hot August and the hot early September, that that ozone layer will reach significant proportions. And I have 5 children, most of them put on shoes in the summer, but I have a 5-year-old that does get his little feet in the street. And concrete is a much safer thing for him personally, and that's why I have such a vested interest in the city, looking at this urban conservation district and look at what Mr. Ward did in the '40s for our neighborhood, and it has incredible value in concrete. Nichols Hills has concrete, Belle Isle has concrete, and Mayfair has concrete. And unless Atlas modifies its plan to put asphalt, it will have a severe damage, decrease the value of my neighborhood. It will constitute a takings, and I think that would subject the city to possible cause of action that would be in a class action. That's what I foresee, but I'm not a fortune teller. So those are, that's my complaint, and I'm here to take any questions you may have.
All right. Stephen, thanks very much.
All right, you bet.
All right. Joe Sarge Nelson?
I'm getting old. I'm here today in reference to a replica and a package, an invitation, that was sent to each one of you. An event that's going on for the very first time in Oklahoma will be at the State Capitol in Rotunda on the 2nd floor, just outside the governor's office. The list or the program that was sent to you is a respective list of guest speakers and guests that we'd like to have on hand to speak. I'm here today because Oklahoma City is Oklahoma's capital. And since it's being done for the very first time, I've had over 150 invites sent out from every police department in Oklahoma County, a few from Canadian County and down in Norman and Cleveland, and all of the sheriff's departments, the US Marshals, Secret Service, and things like that. And I've had a good response from most of them, some I know personally. But I came here today because Oklahoma City, just like that report just said, reflects on just how well you all have done. You represent our state's capital city, Oklahoma City, very well. You've done hard work, and it has shown. And I sent all of y'all that packet for that reason. And I had sent also a request that our mayor, who represents the people of Oklahoma City, to speak in this agenda. Also, the chief of police, Bill Citi, to also speak. He represents Oklahoma City. And Sheriff John Wessel speaks for Oklahoma County, which Oklahoma City is a part of. And Rita Aragon, who is the general of the National Guard, retired. She now runs the state's Veterans Administration office just west of the Capitol. I spoke to her personally, and she's going to speak, and the governor herself. All these are the formation, the reason I'm doing it so early, because a lot of people got a lot of things on their agenda. And if you don't start early, it's not going to happen. It's coming to well, rather well. I've got over 150 answers so far, and I'm hoping that you all come and be a part of it. You're a part of what made Oklahoma great and Oklahoma City, and without you, we're in trouble. It's just that bottom line. And this is the first event of its kind, and I do hope you come. Ronnie Kay with Mr. KLM, Rock and Roll, is supposed to be the emcee on hand. I think he's got a conflict there, and he has requested another person. He's got another person standing in his, excuse me, in his place, but the program will go down effectively as it is. One thing I want you to remember, there's not a political nature of this American flag at all, nor is it have any relation to religious content. I've been asked that by a number of people. It's all about the American flag, nothing else, nothing. So I do hope you come and enjoy yourself. I'm sure you'll run into some people up there you'll know. And with respect to the council, I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Joe.
Jim, can I just ask you? I thought the arguments on the concrete were persuasive and intriguing. What, do you have a thought on that, on asphalt on top of concrete?
Well, we oftentimes do lifecycle analysis on concrete versus asphalt and take ultimate bids. We don't do that on every project, but we do that on a number of projects. Even though with the cost cycle, concrete lasts longer, but generally, the cost of the concrete is more expensive, and so with cost effectiveness, the information about the carcinogens and whether or not it's a taking or not, I'd never heard that argument before. I mean, I know there's potential for a number of carcinogens.
One thing that's been frustrating, and I've talked with Eric, and I know you've noticed, but the contractor wants to do a square mile, and they just want to knock out the whole square mile that's on the bond, just treat every street the same. And I think that's been frustrating because we've got, for example, streets that are also on the bond where we have to wait because the contractor wants to do everything in a square mile, but we get some of what we heard here, where every residential street is being treated the same regardless of its condition.
Well, yeah, no, when we're going in, we're hitting, because mostly they're, when we go into a neighborhood, they're mostly the same age, and most of them are generally in the same condition. Not always, but we go in, and so we have been going in and hitting out those, generally those sections at a time. Eric just stuck his head in and then went back out. I think somebody grabbed him. So we can talk to you about this further.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Anything else from council before we adjourn? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you. We're adjourned.